Councilmember Dovin.
Present.
Councilmember Klaufenstein.
Here.
And Councilmember Kim Wynn Binalosa.
Here.
And Mayor Jones.
Here.
And Mayor Pro Tem Tran is absent this evening.
All right, Matt, are you doing the invocation? Or who's doing the invocation, Matt? Okay. And then followed by Councilmember John O'Neil to lead us in the pledge.
All right, please prepare yourself according to your faith. Dear Lord, we thank you for this council, our mayor, our city staff, our first responders, and for all those who worked to make this such a wonderful city. Tonight, we pray for wisdom, for strength, for courage to do what is right and good for all citizens. May we put the interests of others above our own. May we act with love for the common good and that may we may be good neighbors. Lastly, Lord, we ask that you look over and provide safe passage for some of our younger neighbors here tonight that are about to embark on an exciting journey to the Republic of Korea, serving as proud diplomats of Garden Grove. We ask this in your name, amen.
Please face the flag and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? Begin.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. All righty then, that takes us on to presentations, and we do have a couple of community spotlights tonight, so we'll start with 1A, which is a community spotlight in recognition of the SCS Technicults for their first LEGO League Challenge accomplishments.
Item 1A is a community spotlight in recognition of the SCS Technicults for their first LEGO League Challenge accomplishments. And we have our Assistant City Manager here to give that community spotlight.
Thank you. Would the SCS Technicults please come forward? Just right up here to the front would be great. All right, the SCS Technicults are part of the St. Columban School's Robotics Program, which explores science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, known as STEM, to help develop innovative solutions to real-world problems. To further help develop their confidence, critical thinking, and design skills, the SCS Technicults took part in the first LEGO League FLL Challenge. This season's challenge theme was Masterpiece, and teams were challenged to use technology and the arts to help engage others or increase participation in what they love to do. Using their creativity, the SCS Technicults designed and created an innovative project to combat social isolation within the elderly population by using virtual reality and touch capabilities for deeper engagement. At the November Bots at the Beach Qualifier, the SCS Technicults won the first-place Innovation Project Award and progressed to the December La Conyatta Regionals where they were a Champions Award finalist. The SCS Technicults advanced to the FLL Championship and Explore Festival and represented Garden Grove as one of the top championship team out of 600 regional teams. As a result of a successful season, they have been placed on a waiting list to compete at the FLL Western Edge Open, where teams from around the world will compete. At this time, the mayor and city council would like to present the SCS Technicults with certificates in recognition of their first LEGO League Challenge accomplishments. Excuse me. Congratulations.
You got them all in there? These are all in half of order, but can I just pass them out to you guys? Do they go to what? Congratulations, guys. Can we get you guys, if we can pile all in, come up in here for a picture?
Did you want them having these in the picture?
It doesn't matter if they have their correct one, but if they have them, then hold them up.
Oh, okay. Oh, I can.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Okay, right here. Okay, you can open them up. Yeah, for the pictures. You can show your. Timothy, yeah, go ahead, start going in there, you guys.
We're gonna wrap around here and then face that way until you pull it.
Yeah, just leave, sit, just keep these open here, like this, that way. Hermione. Sophie.
All right, can we squeeze in more for the center? Everybody in the chat.
Probably even more.
Maybe the adult on each end?
What?
An adult on each end?
Oh, yes, okay.
Perfect. Do I just address here? Okay, I need Sophia and Ryder. So Sophia is our captain of the team and Ryder's our co-captain. And so we would like to thank the city and your council, city council members, for recognizing us, for our achievements, because we are very proud that when we're out competing, that we are representing Garden Grove and our schools in Garden Grove. And so this is my second season with FLL, and last year, my whole team was eighth graders, so they were gone. So this year was a brand-new team. So all these students, it was their first season, and they, we started in October, and they made amazing progress and did so well this year and actually took our school to a little further than last year, because now we're on that waiting list to see about going to the world. And they have learned and grown so much, and I just want you to watch out for next year, because they're just beginning, because they have sixth and seventh, so they're gonna be really doing some awesome things next year. Also, we know that you work so hard, and we thank you for all the good things that you do for us in the city and for keeping our city safe. And hello, Coach Tran. And this is our co-coach, we thank Coach Tran so much for being there. And we also have our mentor, Coach Min, and so I could not do this without them. And also, the parents, our fantastic commitment to be on this team, many, many hours. And so it's also an honor for them to be recognized by you. We know you work so hard, and what we do when we have our tournaments, we have a little token that we give out to other teams, and we, this also helps students to learn their core values, to be approaching people for the first time, knowing how to speak to adults they've never spoken to before, and being able to share, like feel the community of FLL and not to be afraid, so that they're building skills, life skills, for their future. And hopefully, many of our students will go into the sciences. And I just want to let you know a little bit of fruit from last year's team, that my, three of my students, the girls, went to Rosary, and they are on the robotics team. And I also have Stuart Craig that is, went to Surbit, and he is also on the robotics team, carrying on to the high school level. So again, thank you for our recognition last year, because it really has motivated the students to pursue these careers. Also, our little token that we want to give away, we have a little surprise for you. We have our little, and we know sometimes you might get a little stressed, so we're gonna give you our, go ahead and pass them out, our little SCS Technicult stress balls. So to relieve your stress. Okay, so thank you so much. You might want to, we can provide you guys one, too. We'll get them out of the car. Okay, so anyways, thank you so.
Before you run off.
Okay.
I know this, this item is near and dear to Cindy Tran's heart, and she's asking if we could take one more picture, so.
Yeah, so she can be in it.
You guys could all pile back up in.
Thank you so much. Oh, yay, yay, we're so glad you made it. And then you can. Oh, I got one, too? Thank you.
You signed your own certificate.
Thank you so much. Thank you, I love you guys. Thank you for the beautiful certificate. Wonderful.
All righty. You guys, by the way, are welcome to clear out if you want to. Clank, you guys can clink on out.
Dinner, dinner homework.
Thank you so much, everyone, thank you. Maybe.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday. Thank you, I love you guys. Is it her birthday? Tomorrow. This is her birthday. Thank you, thank you. That is so cute. No, it can't be her birthday today. Oh, good. It is your birthday.
All righty. Item 1B is a community spotlight in recognition of the Sister City Association of Garden Grove Exchange Student Ambassadors Visiting Anyang, Republic of Korea. Come on up. Garden Grove City Council is pleased to acknowledge 10 outstanding local students selected as ambassadors to represent Garden Grove in the 35th Annual Sister City Exchange Program to Anyang, Republic of Korea. You have to bear with me, this is, there's a few extra pages. For over three decades, the Garden Grove Sister City Association has coordinated the student exchange program and deepened the city's understanding of and ties with the Republic of Korea. Through the Sister City Exchange Program, Garden Grove's youth have had a unique opportunity to learn about the Korean culture firsthand. They see the country's beautiful sights, but more importantly, experience its warm hospitality. The students, along with the chaperones, Hung Lee and Kathleen Nguyen, will serve as Garden Grove's goodwill ambassadors during their 10-day stay. During their visit, they will be staying with Korean families who have graciously opened their homes, homes and hearts to host the students and chaperones. At this time, I'd like to give a brief introduction of each student, and since I've not met you, you're gonna have to wave when I say your name, just so we all know. Jesse Anaya, thank you. Jesse is a junior at Garden Grove High School. He hopes to major in film or criminal justice at LA Film School or Orange Coast College. Derek Cal, a senior at La Quinta High School, Derek hopes to major in nursing, public health, or biochemistry at Cal State Fullerton, Cal State Long Beach, UC Irvine, or UC Riverside. TN Dai. TN is a junior at Bolsa Grande High School, and she hopes to major in biology or finance at UCLA. Emily Ha, a senior at Garden Grove High School, Emily hopes to major in bioengineering at UC Berkeley, UC Irvine, or UCLA. Jolina Lei. Jolina is a senior at Garden Grove High School, and she hopes to major in architecture at UC Berkeley. Kimberly Nguyen, a senior at La Quinta High School, Kimberly hopes to major in biological sciences at UCLA, UC Irvine, UC Santa Barbara, or UC San Diego. Kiona Nguyen. Kiona is a senior at Garden Grove High School, and she hopes to study kinesiology at Cal State Long Beach or UC Irvine. Elizabeth Plankarte, a senior at Pacific High School, Elizabeth hopes to major in journalism or communications at UCLA, UC Berkeley, UC San, Santa Barbara, or UC San Diego. Luis Salazar. Luis is a senior at Garden Grove High School, and he hopes to major in business at Cal State LA, UC Berkeley, or UCLA. Kara Tran, a senior at Garden Grove High School, Kara hopes to major in English at Cal State Long Beach. The city is proud to have such excellent diplomats represent us in Anyang. The mayor and city council would like to present each of you with a certificate of recognition, and we wish you a safe and memorable, memorable, memorable trip to South Korea. Congratulations.
I'll come up in one sec, I just want to say, you guys all look so serious. You guys are heading overseas to Korea, this is gonna be a blast. We're, we're very excited for you, and we know you guys are gonna go over there and just have a great time and also represent our city very well while you're over there. Anyang's a beautiful place, and they're gonna treat you like royalty, and you're gonna come home with so many life memories, it's gonna be awesome. So let me grab the things.
Oh, this Thursday. You're ready to go.
Yeah.
That's a long, I've never done that, it's a long way, man. Come on over.
Oh, once, once by the two. I'm sorry, sorry. Where are we going? Thank you. Elizabeth.
Wrap around.
Sure it's boy, girl, boy, girl.
I don't think it's gonna work. Yeah, keep going, even, even on both sides, keep going.
Keep going.
Another one, keep going.
You can, you can go a little bit further.
A little bit further.
And then look at me. One, two, three. And then look at Terry.
It's a Korean barbecue.
And then, are we all here? Everyone got their photos?
All right, have fun.
Have fun, you guys.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Jones, members of city's council, and the city manager Lisa Kim. My name is Hung Lee. I am the Vice President of the Sister City Association of Garden Grove, and I am also the chaperone for the, to the 2024 Student Exchange Program. With me today is our student alumni Kathleen Nguyen, who was a Garden Grove Ambassador of the 2018 Exchange Program. So upon returning from Korea, she continued to contribute to our community, to her volunteer work with the Sister City Association, and it's our honor to have her serve as a chaperone of this year's program. Behind me, as you know, are 10 excellent Garden Grove Unified School District High School students, chosen from a pool of over 60 applications. They are selected for their academic success, unique characteristics, and vibrant personalities. They are true example of why Garden Grove is known as the city of youth and ambitions. So before I turn the mic over to the students, I would like to express my sincere gratitude to all of you for your continued support of the Sister City Associations, especially our fundraising event, the Strawberry Storm 5K. Last year, the event drew approximately 700 participants and guests to the downtown area. On the proceed, went toward this year's student exchange program, including the airfare to Korea. Without your support from the city council, city staff, Garden Grove Police Department, and Garden Grove Public Works Department, student exchange program wouldn't exist. Thank you very much. With that having said, the Strawberry Storm 5K is back on Main Street Saturday, May 25, 2024, which is the Memorial Weekend. So registration is now open, and we're looking forward to see you all at the storm. And on the proceed of this year's race, we'll go to fund the 2025 Student Exchange Program. And now, I would like to introduce representatives of this year, Garden Grove ambassadors, TN Dai, Derek Cal, and Kimberly Nguyen, who have something to say to your cities, to the city council and the city staff.
We start with TN.
Hi, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, I'm Mayor Jones, city council members and staff, and my fellow student ambassadors. My name is TN Dai, and I am a junior at Bolsa Grande High School. I stand before you all today with a deep sense of gratitude and appreciation for the incredible leadership that shapes the foundation of Garden Grove. I stand as a student at Bolsa Grande High School, and without your immense support, I wouldn't be here where I am today. And on a more personal note, I am delighted to share with you all my journey to South Korea in less than two days. Approximately two months ago, I and nine other students warmly embraced the arrival of our Anyang students, and behalf of all of us, I think I can say that we all had a wonderful time. And when I go to Korea, I really hope to learn more about its traditions, such as wearing a hanbok, for I had introduced my student to wearing an aoyai, which is a Vietnamese traditional dress. As we only have two days left, I really hope that I can join my Anyang student and the rest of the students here, in hopes to represent Garden Grove on an international stage. Ultimately, I look forward to carrying the spirit of Garden Grove to Korea, and I am grateful for the enjoyable experiences I have had while hosting my student in our beloved city. Together, let us continue to shape at the foundation of Garden Grove, at the city of which we all call home. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Jones and members of city council. My name is Derek Cal, and I'm a senior at La Quinta High School. I'm one of the student ambassadors representing Garden Grove. And thank you just so much for supporting this program and making it possible. I have already made so many lifelong memories, even though the trip hasn't started yet. Such as, I don't think I'll ever forget about how me, my exchange student, and Mayor Jones went on an e-bike trip in the middle of the night. Like, who else can say they could do that? As for the trip itself, I'm excited to board an airplane for the very first time. I can't wait to experience it firsthand, instead of watching first-class review videos on YouTube. In Korea, I am excited to just be immersed in a completely different culture, with different experiences and customs and norms that I'm just so used to here today, like tipping culture. It's everywhere here, but almost obsolete in other countries, and I find that amazing. And I'm just looking forward to making these other connections and other observations in South Korea. And thank you again so much for supporting this program, and I'm super excited to go.
Good evening, Mayor Jones, members, members of the city council and dedicated city staffs. My name is Kimberly Nguyen, and I'm a senior at La Quinta High School. I want to begin by expressing our extreme gratitude for the once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to serve as a Garden Grove Unified District Student Ambassadors. Without unwavering support, we wouldn't be here today to represent our community with pride and purpose. We are truly honored by the trust you have placed in us. As we prepare for our journey to Korea, our excitement knows no bounds. I'm excited to reunite with my Korean friends, meet my host family, and particularly explore the unique and breathtaking culture. One of the things I'm looking forward to is exploring the nuances of traditional customs like hanboks. Hanboks are our traditional ceremonial dress that are worn on special events like weddings, holiday celebrations, and birthdays. It is a privilege to have the opportunity to wear a hanbok, and I anticipate learning more about it. Lastly, I would also like to thank Mayor Jones and Mrs. Jones for opening up your home for us to spend time together with our Korean friends. I had so much fun hosting and spending time with Su Young. It is something I will never forget, and I hope the future ambassadors are able to experience the joy that I had. Once again, we extend our heartfelt gratitude for this incredible opportunity and for your continued support. Thank you.
Well done, guys. Thank you. All right, go enjoy your dinner, you guys can clear out, so we can fill some potholes. All righty, next we will roll right into oral communications. I do have a handful of cards, starting with Randall Noleen.
Hello, my name is Randall Noleen. I am, I am with the Eagleman Housing Project, Project. Our efforts aim to end homelessness for American Indians and Alaskan natives in Orange County. It consists of seven organizations and an advisory committee of American Indians and Alaskan natives who have lived experience with homelessness. We are here on our behalf, the community, to create visibility and to share our mission. We hope that the city of Garden Grove helps uplift our voices by supporting our advocacy efforts and is open to meeting with us to find solutions. Please take our handout to learn more about us and how to connect. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ron Skolsdang.
Hi, everybody. Thank you so much for having me. Appreciate the time and the ears. My name is Ron Skolsdang. I'm co-founder of a nonprofit organization called Seniors Fight Back. We provide self-defense resources for the senior citizen community, hi, and, and beyond, AAPI 2 as well. The reason why we formed was because of the rise in attacks on not just the AAPI community, but also the senior citizen community, specifically for the senior citizen community. Coming up, even of last November, a local resident, Chung Pham, 87-year-old, walking home, got followed home, got attacked, lost his life shortly afterwards, very, very unfortunate. And that's why we, as an organization, are still here today, providing workshops and resources for the senior citizen community and beyond. I'm here today specifically on behalf of our group, because we will be teaching a self-defense workshop in Garden Grove Park on the 23rd of March from 9:00 AM till 10:00 AM. And what you can expect out of this class is really, really simple, practical things that anybody can learn, though through liability purposes, we can only have people 18 and over attend the actual class. But it will entail situational awareness, body language, voice, and very, very easy, light physical techniques. We'll be giving away gifts too, as well, such as pepper sprays, safety alarms. With proper instruction, we're not just gonna hand you pepper spray and just say good luck, we'll properly train you on how to utilize that. And that is pretty much it. I want to thank Mayor Pro Tem Tran and Director Montinses, if I mispronounce it, my apologies, and the staff for helping coordinate this class. If nobody has any questions, that's all I have for today. Thank you so much for your time.
Cool, thank you, brother.
Thank you, guys.
Lupe Lopez.
Good evening, members of the board, mayor. Good evening. My name is Lupe Lopez, and I'm a resident here of Garden Grove, the city of Garden Grove, and I'm here on behalf of Eagleman Housing Project. I am very much involved in the Native American community, even as a parent. I serve as the co-chair of the American Indian Title VI Indian Education of the Garden Grove Unified School District. Unified School District. And so, working with families, working with community. And what our goal is, is to end Native Americans being homeless here in Orange County. And we are compiling a survey, a 10-questionnaire survey, that hopefully by the end of April, we would have completed it as data statistics to showcase where our hotspots are of our native people, being insecure housing, homeless, where there is a need, and what are the high important topics that affect our Native American community. So, members of the board, we ask that each and every one of you remember that as the original inhabitants of these lands of all of the Western Hemisphere, that no Native American should be homeless. And I just want to say, I have left my phone number, my contact, and as a resident of Garden Grove, I'm here to be of service. Let's help the city of Garden Grove. Let's be the role model in Garden Grove, so that we can showcase all the other cities what we have done for our original inhabitants of these lands. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Kyle Mason.
Good evening, everybody. It's been a little while since I've been here. I called to say thank you. You guys have picked up the patrols in our area, and you have cleaned up a little bit of the graffiti. Unfortunately, it's gotten three times worse. And the same with the homeless, same with the riverbed. I'd like to know when it's possibility you guys are going to put the fences up around the riverbeds to stop the people from going down in there. I've been here almost a year now. They said there was a bicycle path that was supposed to be coming through our area, but the money, it was all paid for, but it never gotten done. Well, I was hoping maybe the money would be put for putting up these fences. And I've been coming in here for quite a while now, and we've not gotten anything done. I took off and was gone for about, oh, a week, and I came back and I see some of the homeless gone, and a little bit of the graffiti covered up, but it's right back to where it was again. Please, you guys, we need more police officers. In fact, just yesterday alone, there was a gentleman naked, jumped over the wall. Two women police officers showed up and arrested him and took him out of there. I mean, the guy was out of his mind. I mean, the neighborhood is crazy. My next-door neighbor, they cut his chain-link fence, busted the wood fence along with that, and were in his yard stealing his fruits, chickens, eggs, hens. I want your address. Let me come to your refrigerator and steal all your food. How would you feel? Okay? We called the police. They ask, "Is it $900 worth of damage?" And they don't even show up. What does it take? I'd like some answers. What do I do to get the answers, you guys? What do I do to get the answers about getting the fence put down in the riverbed and around the riverbed to keep them out? Where do I go? Who do I see? I'm here speaking to you all, and I don't get any answers ever. If you guys don't mind, I'm going to hang around till after the meeting and hopefully talk to a couple of y'all and show you some pictures of what I'm talking about, and maybe we can come to some arrangements?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak who did not submit a card? Okay, seeing none, we will close oral communications. Next, we will recess and go to the successor agency. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Member Bradigan?
Here.
Member Tran?
Yeah.
Member Dovin?
Present.
Member Klaffenstein?
Here.
Member Win Pinalosa?
Here.
Vice Chair O'Neill?
Here.
And Chair Jones?
Here.
All right, we already did oral communications. We have consent items, just receive and file the minutes. Can I get a motion?
Second.
Call to vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Any matters? Seeing none, we will adjourn back to city council. And we will reconvene and go to consent items. It's recommended that 3A through 3I be acted on simultaneously unless anyone would like to poll. Call to vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All right, public hearings, item 4A.
Item 4A is to introduce an ordinance approving an amendment to the Garden Grove Police Department Military Equipment Use Policy and authorize the issuance of a purchase order for 22 Giselle Super Duty AR-15 rifles. And the ordinance is entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove Approving an Amendment to Attachment 706.5 of the Garden Grove Police Department Military Equipment Use Policy Pursuant to Government Action Code 7071." And I believe Mr. Sandoval is going to give that report?
Mayor, members of the city council, I believe Captain Dalton should be here shortly, so let me track him down.
I can give a three-second report.
Good evening, mayor, council, city manager. We're here to request council approval of an ordinance approving an amendment to the Garden Grove Police Department's Military Equipment Use Policy and a purchase of 22 Giselle Super Duty AR-15 rifles for use by the department SWAT team. Effective January 2022, California Assembly Bill 481 added Chapter 12.8 to Division 7 of the Title I of the Government Code. These provisions require law enforcement agencies to obtain the approval of their respective governing bodies by adoption of a military equipment use policy prior to use of any equipment defined by the Government Code as military equipment. In adopting ordinance number 2944, the city council in part approved the department's continued use of the Sig Sauer MCX rifles. The Sig Sauer MCX rifles are used by the Garden Grove Police Department SWAT team, which has encountered various issues related to the design and capabilities of these rifles. The most significant challenges are related to their weight, length, gas blowback, and limitations in training use. As a result, the department wishes to acquire new rifles which align better with the department's mission, profile, and tactics compared to the current Sig Sauer MCX platform. Throughout the research and testing phase, the department's objective has been to make a transition without incurring any out-of-pocket expenses. After careful evaluation, the department has concluded that the Giselle Super Duty AR-15 is the most suitable choice for the department's needs, offering the best fit at an affordable price point. The acquisition of the new Giselle Super Duty AR-15 will eliminate the issues encountered with respect to the Sig Sauer MCX rifles. Before the department acquires any new military equipment, it must first obtain approval from council. Because the acquisition of the Giselle Super Duty AR-15 rifles would occur prior to the city council's required annual reapproval of the department's military use policy, the department must obtain city council authorization to replace the rifles currently in use with their replacements. With the respect to the acquisition of the rifles themselves, there will be minimal cost to the city. Proforce, a current vendor utilized by the department, has agreed to purchase the old Sig Sauer MCX rifles, along with the additional non-utilized SWAT gear in return for the Giselle Super Duty AR-15 rifles. It is recommended that city council introduce the ordinance amending the Garden Grove Police Department Military Equipment Use Policy and authorize the finance director to issue a purchase order for 22 Giselle Super Duty AR-15 rifles and the exchange of the existing Sig Sauer MCX rifles and additional non-utilized SWAT gear.
Sir? Any comments, questions, or? Oh, hold on, hold on, hold on. This is a public hearing. Yeah, okay. So, we will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on item 4A? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Colleagues? Call to vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All right, takes us on to items for consideration. We've got four listed, so item 5A.
Item 5A is authorize the issuance of a purchase order to National Auto Fleet Group for two new Public Works Department trucks, and Mr. Murray is here to give that report.
Palmeroy, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, city council is being asked to authorize purchase of two trucks for the Animal Care Division of the Public Works Department, and those will be purchased from the National Auto Fleet Group through a Sourcewell Competitive Bid Program. One truck meets the city's guidelines for replacement, and the other truck is a new fleet addition. Based on the results of the recent Sourcewell Competitive Bid Program, National Auto Fleet is the lowest responsible bid with a cost of just over $307,000 for two Ford F-250s and the animal control bodies that go with them. There are, there is no impact to the general fund, and this purchase was approved in the budget. Should council decide to authorize the purchase tonight, we hopefully will take delivery of the trucks by the end of the year. This concludes staff's report. And we're available, should you have any questions?
Thanks, Bill. Colleagues? Call to vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
5B.
5B is award a contract to International Line Builders, Inc. for traffic signal modifications at Garden Grove Boulevard, Nelson Street, Century Boulevard, and Garden Grove Boulevard, Newland Street. This is City Project CP 1345,000 and CP 1346,000, and Mr. Murray will give that report.
Thank you, Ms. Palmeroy, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, city council is asked to award a contract to International Line Builders, Incorporated, for the construction of two traffic signal modifications at the intersections of Garden Grove and Nelson Century, and Garden Grove Boulevard and Newland Street. Both projects involve installation of new signal equipment, poles, cabinets, conduits, and cables. As part of the improvements, protective left turn phasing will be provided for the east and westbound traffic on Garden Grove Boulevard at both intersections. In addition, roadway striping will be modified and handicap ramps will be constructed to our latest ADA requirements for both projects. This work is to all be done at a cost of nearly $984,000. Staff received an open Ford qualified bids on February 21st of this year and determined that International Line Builders was the lowest responsible bidder. Should the council decide to award the contract tonight, the contractor can begin work in March and should be complete by October of this year. Was included in this year's capital improvement plan for the Public Works Department and will be paid for with red light camera and highway safety improvement funds, and those funds from the federal government will total $957,000. This concludes staff's report. And we're available, should you have any questions?
Thanks, Bill. Colleagues? Joe?
Just a quick question. It seems to be in my district. Is it District 4?
I'd have to actually look that up. I don't have all the district boundaries memorized.
It is?
Yeah, Garden Grove Boulevard.
Oh, there. Thank you very much. I'm going to vote it up. Direct benefit to my district and our residents, so thank you, Bill.
Is that a motion?
Yeah.
Call to vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
5C.
5C is award a contract to Comet Electric, Inc. for project number CP 1344023, traffic signal modifications at various locations for fiscal year 2324, and Mr. Murray will give that report.
Thank you, Ms. Palmeroy, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, city council is asked to award a contract to Comet Electric, Incorporated, for the construction of traffic signal modifications at the intersections of Magnolia and Lamson, Brookhurst and Hazard, and Garden Grove Boulevard, Galway Street, and Trask Avenue and Hope Street. This work includes the installation of new signal equipment, poles, cabinets, conduits, cables, and video detection, including the loops as well, but we're also including vehicle video detection. The protective permission of left turn phasing will be provided at the east and westbound traffic on Lamson and Magnolia Street. In addition, all existing signal poles located in the center median islands at Brookhurst and Hazard, and Garden Grove and Galway will be eliminated due to frequent damages from vehicular collisions. As part of the improvements, striping will be modified, and of course, curb ramps will be constructed to meet the latest ADA's requirements. This work will be done at a cost of nearly $1.4 million. Staff received an open five qualified bids on February 21st of this year and determined that Comet Electric was the lowest responsible bidder. Should the council decide to award the contract tonight, the contractor can begin work in March and should be complete again by October of this year. This project was included in this year's capital improvement plan for the Public Works Department and will be paid for entirely with red light camera funds. This concludes staff's report. And we're available, should you have any questions?
Thanks, Bill.
Yes, just wanted to say thank you very much for doing this, because I looked through the report talking about some of the poor damage, and you want to make it ADA accessible or whatever, so just wanted to say thank you for paying attention and doing the work, just so that our residents will have a better street, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, most of them.
I'll second.
Call to vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
5D.
Item 5D is award a contract to BKM Office Environments to procure and install furniture, fixtures, and equipment, FFNE, for the Central Cities Navigation Center project, number CP 135000-1, and Ms. Lee is here to give that report.
Good evening, mayor and members of the city council. The item before you is the award of contract to BKM Office Environments, or BKM for short, to procure, coordinate, store, and install FFNE for the Central Cities Navigation Center project. As the construction for the Navigation Center approaches 80% completion, FFNE is a milestone toward the center's full operation. On January 17, the city solicited bids for an FFNE vendor through an extensive formal RFP process. On January 25, the city hosted a non-mandatory bid walk as an opportunity for potential bidders to observe the job site. Only BKM attended this walk. On February 7, the city received three proposals. A comprehensive selection panel of three staff rated these proposals and conducted oral interviews. BKM received the highest score. The summary of the rating is provided in your staff report. BKM is a Ventura County-based, woman-owned company whose key personnel have over 16 years of experience in the FFNE industry. BKM also has extensive prior experience with projects similar to the Navigation Center. Due diligence confirmed positive feedback in the era for BKM in the areas of credibility, responsiveness, and customer service. They have an extensive network of manufacturers for high-quality and strong warranty materials, allowing them to offer a variety of alternatives to work within our budget and meet our expedited project schedule. There is no fiscal impact on the general fund. Funding for this FFNE contract is included in the Navigation Center's construction budget, and no additional appropriation is necessary. It is recommended that the city council award a contract to BKM for FFNE services for the Navigation Center project in an amount not to exceed $425,089.34, and authorize the city manager or her designees to execute the agreement. the city manager or her designees to execute the agreement, approve additional amendments as necessary, and make minor modifications as appropriate thereto on behalf of the city. This concludes my staff report. I'd like to invite BKM representatives to the podium to share about the company. Staff and BKM representatives are available for questions after.
I don't have any medals or jet setting anywhere. Cool, so I feel like we don't have a lot to share or exciting stuff to share. Yeah, it's really exciting, yeah. I'm Rachel Price with BKM.
I'm Deja with BKM.
Thank you for having us here tonight. Thank you for such a lovely facility. It's wonderful in here, but most of all, thanks for allowing us the opportunity to participate in the RFP and potentially engage more in your project. You guys have incredible engagement from the community, and we've seen a lot of that from your studies for the Navigation Center and then heard some people speak today, so I feel like the efforts to get the center up and running are a priority for the city, and we're excited to be a partner there for that, so. Any questions or anything specific to the project that must come up?
Quick question. For the public's benefit, could you give us a brief description of the products, like partitions, beds, things, just a quick?
Yeah, absolutely. Deja, you want to speak to some?
Yes. The majority of it is going to be the beds and then the mattresses. We also have storage pieces for personal belongings. And then there's also some staff areas. We have some workstations with some tax chairs, and then the dining area composes of folding tables and some dining chairs as well that are stackable. We went with durable and wipeable finishes, and then we went with things that have a really strong warranty, such as the beds have a lifetime limited warranty as well.
Thank you.
It's gorgeous. Congratulations. Anything else? Any other questions? Yes?
Joe?
Yeah. Just a couple of comments, not questions really. Number one, thank you for stepping up if you were the only one there. That's kudos to you to be proactive and taking a big interest in this project but our city, so welcome. Very welcoming news, and especially you're a women minority-owned business. I'm a minority, and I know that our unhoused population, we have a lot of women and minorities. If you could work into part of the furniture, one of the sad truths is we have a lot of children who are unhoused, so be coming through the shelter, so anything that'll make them more comfortable. I'm not saying plush cuddlies necessarily, but just, you know, toys for kids thereto.
That's a great input. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just happily make the motion.
Okay, call to vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All right, matters, nothing listed, but we'll go around the horn real quick. George, anything?
Actually, not a whole lot, but happy birthday, Councilwoman Cindy Tran. And not a whole lot, so that's it for me. Twenty-nine today.
My husband had that cake, twenty-nine. Yes.
Just one item, just to remind everybody that there's a community cleanup this weekend, so if you're a Garden Grove resident, you can dispose of your trash and bulky items. It happens to be in District 2 at Skylark Elementary. That's right near Magnolia Park. When you drive down Magnolia, you see that school. If you're not from that area, it's right there. It's at 11250 McMurray, and it's only two-hour window, so maybe if you have these long days here this week, Thursday, Friday, get your junk out and get it ready and loaded. So Saturday morning is from 9:00 to 11:00 at Skylark Elementary. We'll see you Saturday. I'll see you there.
Yes, I have a couple items. So first, a couple days ago, I attend a Women in Leader Summit with Councilmembers Stephanie and Lisa. There was a lot of sharing story, but I just want to bring back a quick note. Many of the leader in the room, they start with nothing, meaning that one of the ladies said, she didn't know anything about accounting, and the person was helping her and said, "The only thing you need to know is black is good and red is not good." But now she is one of the leader, and so there were so many things that said. I just want to bring it back just so that, you know, that's to encourage anyone, just like me, you know, start with nothing, just a high school student, and now I'm here. So the one quote that I got from that, that's the one I like the most, was treat other as if they will be your boss in the future. And every time I go to high school to talk to students or the guest speaker, I always tell them similar thing. You never know, your friend could be your boss in the future, and so just make that network and keep that. So that first. Second, I want to say thank to our policeman for finding the laptop for the owner of the radio, so Ma Vietnam. I saw her two days ago, and she mentioned that someone broke in her office and stole the laptop, which is very valuable to her, and she said that she never seen anyone did that fast. Our police were able to find it a couple days, two or three days later, and it just by, I guess that, I asked for the police name. I didn't get it, but basically he was looking for it actively, and it happened to be, he was, someone recognized the face, and they were able to get the guy, and he had a laptop in his pants. So anyway, kudo to our policeman. She wants to bring it back to our staff and make sure that we recognize our policeman for the great work that we did. Next is thanks to our fire authority department. This is from one of the business owners at the corner of Chapman and Brookhurst. I get there were a fire, but our fire department were able to knock down the fire just within five minutes, and so the business owner just wanted me to bring back and say thank to our fire department. Next one is the Councilmember George Dovin and I are working with the Chamber of Commerce. We're working on a community event. I know that from District 1 and District 2 already did. It's going to be the first week of April, and we're working on the actual date and the agenda is going to be at one of the restaurant. We talked to the restaurant owner already, but more information will be followed. Last but not least, the barbecue chicken is going to have the ribbon cutting on this Thursday at 6:30, so it is my district, so I want to bring up and let everyone know. I also want to say thank to Councilmembers Stephanie and George for coming to the U and I restaurant for their first anniversary. They just want to say sincere thank you to both of you for your support, and that was it for me. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
My favorite agenda item at every meeting is the spotlight, so I'm going to take away this time, the technical coach, where we serve out the STEM program, and now we see them in action, and they're very, 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 just a joy to see them come of age and accomplish so many great things. We're the city of youth and ambition, so we welcome all the youth and celebrate them. And that delegation to Angi, the gentleman, the young man that spoke to him, he was Derek Cowell. He reminds me of myself when I was his age, and it was my first time to travel on plane too, so I can just see the joy in his eyes, and that's such enthusiasm, and I think, I thank you for the parents to support them, and the coach. And we have wonderful times, but we did every year when we get to go flying, and next time when the owners would come to, to everyone for our West Alhaz, for Asia and Pacific, I wish I could join them, and he was willing to change place with that. And go Angi, I'm going to be mayor. So that does show how much we appreciate them, and we had a lot of fun with their class coming over here and we also have our staff, our soul people that I know that, so that's a good time. This, tonight, I want to celebrate Women's History Month, which is still the month of March, and also a proclamation that we are going to announce many soon, and we have it. And celebrating City Transport Day. My oldest daughter is also born March 13th, so we all celebrate Women's History Month. It was only Women's Day internationally, it's March 8, and every year it becomes more and more prominent, and tonight we have a woman-owned minority business that we've contracted with, and thank you very much, Stephanie, for helping us out, and hopefully the Navigation Center will be just one of your major projects in around Garden Grove.
Stephanie?
Thank you. I'm going to spare you a full happy dance, but I am very excited because Cottage Industries' Smoke Queen BBQ had their soft opening on Friday. I thought it was very fitting that International Women's Day, Pit Master or Pit Madam Whitney, or Winnie, gosh, I can't even talk, would have her soft opening, and it was wonderful to see so many people there celebrating her and all her accomplishments. She's been featured on Food Network, many different shows, and so it's really, I think, a proud moment to have her choose Garden Grove, to have her brick and mortar for store and restaurant, and the food is incredible. And I went back again the following day with my family, and the line was out the door. And so Smoke Queen BBQ is open Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays. I believe it's noon to 4:00 or until they sell out. And you can find Winnie on social media. She has a very active Instagram, and a lot of foodies around the county and beyond are sharing her incredible food and story, so please make sure to support her and Smoke Queen BBQ, and I'm also very excited for this District 5 business, the cottages, to continue to flourish as new businesses come in. I think it's really going to be someplace special for Garden Grove and for Orange County and there, so thank you, and please, please go.
Yes, thank you. Couple complaints, I'm sorry. I want to first and foremost thank GGP D's SRT team. I know that they get bothered by me a lot, but I know they put in a lot of hard work. I know I've already gotten a lot of messages regarding the New Hope and Westminster area that a fence is now up, so everyone's really excited about the fence. Thank the Lord. And we did have, I believe there was a cleanup on the 22 freeway exit area by the Motel 6 off of Harbor and Trask, but it's slowly picking up again. So I just want to ask, if there's a way that we can communicate with Caltrans, I know that there's not a way for them to fence up the area, but maybe they need to reimagine that space, and if they need to just throw on a bunch of rocks or cactus, then so be it. We, I know that I was driving last week, and I saw a bunch of activity and found out later that there was a deceased individual in that area, so it's just a hotspot, it's not safe. They're right across from a fire station, and yet, you know, that activity is just picking up, so we, leaving it as is is no longer in sufficient response from Caltrans, and having them come out once a month or whenever we inundate them with requests, that takes forever for them to come out and clean it up, is just not working anymore. That entire area, also, the new, I thought was beautiful up until a couple days ago when I noticed all the graffiti, the wall, the brick wall that was placed behind the shell along the other opposite end of Harbor and Trask, where there used to be the statues. Lisa, do you know the area where the public storage is supposed to go in? That whole wall is graffiti, and I imagine that there's encampments past the point where you can see, so if we can have folks go look at that and get that cleaned up as well. And lastly, I just want to echo Councilmember Dovin's comments regarding Women's History Month. I'm really appreciative of the fact that we, as a staff, show the women-owned business, and that was on the agenda today alongside the resolution or proclamation that I had asked for many years ago. So on that note, just want to say happy birthday to Councilmember Cindy Tran.
City Manager, at least Kim.
Thank you, Mayor, Members of the City Council. Just one item, I just wanted to recognize and really thank our collaboration with Garden Grove Unified School District with their first impressions on school student art exhibit this weekend. It's located at Garden Grove Courtyard Center and Village Green Park, and the gallery and their exhibit will be available through Thursday, so please stop by. Also wanted to acknowledge Mayor Protam, Cindy Tran, and Councilmember Bridigam was firsthand on Saturday presenting awards to students of highlighting their beautiful works of art, and this was the first year that we had pre-K added to the student mix, and they were absolutely adorable, so thank you.
Oh, cool.
Like herding cats.
General Counsel, any closed session or anything to report out?
Mayor, we did have a closed session earlier this evening, and there is no reportable action out of that item.
All righty, thank you. With that, we will stand adjourned, so enjoy the rest of your evening, everyone.